All right, good evening. Today is Monday, October 18th, 2021. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. Do I have a motion to call the meeting to order? Cynthia, second. Laura, all in favor? All right, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we'll jump right into comments by the board. We have a little bit of a lean staff tonight. Both Teraz and Lori could not join us tonight, so it was just the three of us. So we'll go around and do comments and updates on committees and things of that nature. Cynthia, you want to go first?
I kind of just wanted to comment on the homecoming weekend, which I usually, I don't have kids who do those things, but I really wanted to go to see what it was. I mean, it was absolutely, to be honest, was amazing, the school spirit, and just seeing all the community come together. I mean, I just wanted to say thank you to the school. And I don't know everybody who was involved, but it was really an unbelievable weekend all around. And it kind of just made you feel really good about our community, our school, the staff, the students. It was really just a nice place to be. So that's kind of what I, that's all I have.
Great. Laura?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback off Cynthia. That was a really great homecoming week. Thank you to the administration, the teachers and parents that volunteered cooking and setting up things. And the smiles were just amazing, the kids. Between the parades and every game was exciting. I tried to make all of them, and each one, one was more exciting than the next. So thank you to the students and the faculty and everyone that involved in making it a really special homecoming. I felt, I think the energy was there for sure.
Absolutely.
And then also, I'd like to give two updates. Two committees have met since we last had a meeting, so I'll just give a brief update. The Facilities Committee had a meeting. And so we got updated on the Cottle Field Design, which I also understand there's some user groups that have met since we, since the committee met. But basically, it's moving along really nicely. We discussed a little bit of the timeline that things are going to take place. So the SED, the New York State SED, I believe, is going to happen this month, November.
Yes, that's what we're hoping for.
Cottle. And then Middle School, High School, December, with the timeline being the field's going to start to work in the winter times. And then by June-ish, it looks like that might be completed. So we just talked about timelines and some other design things. For example, the cafeteria, they worked in changing it up a little bit, the outside looking a little bit more like the, that blue box that we have.
Yeah.
Just some continuity. So a little different than the original rollout, but still, it was still beautiful and very exciting. So that's moving along nicely. And I believe, Faith, you were going to say the user groups have, yeah, and that was very helpful.
Yes.
Right? So they talked about design and brought the teachers in and administrators and really put all the heads together to give some more input and options. So, and then the Finance Committee also met, and we just got a review or an overview of our audit that was conducted. And we, it's great to say that we got the highest marks you could get. And the Bonadino Group will be here the next meeting to present to the district. So those are the two updates from me.
All right, great. Yeah, I don't have too much. I was actually going to also mention about the homecoming. It was already said, but it was an amazing turnout and really great to see everyone, everyone come out. And the football game was packed. It was just great. It was a great weekend. So that was awesome. I also wanted to mention, I don't know if I'm going to be redundant to you, Dr. Goodman, but I know there's been a lot, since the last board meeting, there's been a lot of, we received a lot of emails and a lot of concern about the towns considering the, or considering the marijuana dispenser law. So I guess the state passed a law about how you can't open up a marijuana dispensary as long as your town doesn't opt out of that. Most of the towns in our area have opt out of it. The Tuckahoe Town Board is considering a resolution. I don't know if they call it a resolution, but an opt-out. And I believe they're going to be voting on that on November 8th. So I guess there was some concern about that not happening. So some of that concern came to us as the board and to the superintendent as well. You know, just concerned that it may not, that the town may not opt out of it and what that impact that would have on our kids. And, you know, because most of our kids, obviously, a lot of our kids live in Tuckahoe and even our kids that live in Eastchester, obviously, are in Tuckahoe a lot. So we were a little concerned about it as well. We did draft a letter from the board and from the superintendent, unanimous letter, obviously, expressing our opposition to a dispensary being allowed to be open in Tuckahoe and us urging the town board to vote, to opt out. That letter went over on October 8th. So just wanted to give an update on that, that we did try and take a proactive approach on that. I know we did make some outreach, superintendent talked to the mayor. All indications are is that likely the support is there by the town board to opt out, but of course, we won't know until they actually vote. But we just want to let everybody know that we, as a school board, did take a proactive approach and did draft a letter and sent it over to let it be known that we were against that for the safety of our, and the well-being of our kids. So that's that. And then over the weekend, I know there was also some concern about the high school field, the start time of the rec league being out there a little bit earlier than what the policy allows. So this has been a little bit of an issue. I know the superintendent addressed it directly. So I think it's been resolved for the time being. But it does bring up, I think, a little bit of a greater issue that I do think we should bring to the Facilities Committee. I know we talked about it last week, I mean, last couple of months ago. But there's just quite a few different issues, I think, that are bubbling up with this, you know, the issue of sometimes things starting earlier than they should. Then also the issue of, you know, how we want to, in general, attack public use of our fields, especially with the money we're investing in the new field at Cottle. And then there's also been the, you know, the care of the field and folks, kids getting on the field when they're not supposed to and how the field's being treated. So I think there's, you know, whether or not we should be having more sort of, you know, camera coverage or more, you know, physical presence there. So I think it's time to really address this head-on in the Facilities Committee. So I'm going to recommend that we take that up and that maybe we, you know, it's going to be in a meeting and just to talk about all these issues, see if there needs to be any policy change or if we need to make some recommendations out of the committee to the district, to the administration about what we can do to shore. We're spending a lot of money, obviously, to make our fields nice and keep them nice. And we want to make sure that happens. So anyway, just wanted to address that. So that's, that's all I got. So turn it over to you, Dr. Goodman.
Okay, so before I get into my report, I just would like to read the letter that Mr. Casson and I wrote to Mayor Adino and the Village Board of Trustees. Dear Mayor Adino and Village Board of Trustees, we understand there is an upcoming vote about whether or not the town or the village will permit marijuana dispensaries in our community. The Tuckahoe Union Free School District Board of Education and Superintendent are opposed to this measure. We understand there is sentiment among village leadership that feels similarly, and we encourage our village to join the large number of neighboring communities that have elected to opt out of permitting marijuana dispensaries and cafes in our community. Marijuana has been called the gateway drug, and for some marijuana has adverse physical and psychological risks. We are working with the towns of Eastchester, Tuckahoe, and Bronxville in a coalition called Stronger Together. Representatives from these three towns promote long-term health and wellness and foster programs to eliminate substance abuse among our youth. Additionally, we work with our law enforcement officers in our elementary dare program. Having a dispensary in the heart of our village sends a harmful message about our community's values. Our district understands that bringing in new businesses increases revenue and that this benefits our school district and students. We are excited by new stores opening in spaces downtown. At your upcoming vote, we hope that you and the trustees decide to support businesses more in line with the efforts being made to promote safe decision-making at our schools. We encourage the village government to opt out of permitting marijuana dispensaries and cafes in our community. We ask that you join the growing number of Westchester communities such as Bronxville, Eastchester, Yorktown, Lordmont, Ordley, and Mount Kisco in saying no to this measure. We appreciate your efforts to hear from all constituents, and thank you for considering the district's unique insights into what is best for Tuckahoe's students. Respectfully, Dr. Amy Goodman, Superintendent of Schools, and Mr. Peter Casson, Board President, and we are speaking for the entire board in this letter. And now I'll start with my report. Good evening, Tuckahoe School Community and Board Trustees. I'll begin this report by recognizing the Board of Education on the first day of School Board Recognition Week. This week is dedicated to recognizing the dedication of school boards across New York State. Tuckahoe's Board of Education is comprised of hard-working, committed individuals who support the schools in our efforts to prepare every student for excellence. Tuckahoe's staff, students, and leaders thrive because this board has a strong, child-centered approach overseeing district operations. I appreciate your thoughtful consideration in setting the district's direction and your respect for public education and public service. School Board Trustees are volunteers, and we are fortunate to have volunteers with an unwavering respect for our students and our staff, this, and our community especially. This evening, at the conclusion of our meeting, we will celebrate with some treats that are a small token of my appreciation. Tonight additionally, the board will vote on resignations for the purpose of retirement. Tonight marks the first step in our standoff, which will culminate in a celebration of their years of service at the School Board Meeting on April 19th. But tonight, we vote on their retirement and to, vote them into retirement at the end of the, of the year. We wish them luck, and tonight we will move to accept, though sadly, but really happy for them, the resignations of Diane Mitchell, Carol DiRienzo, Monica D'Alito, Kim Durbin, Jennifer Scrivo, and Kathy Mosher. As the board members have talked about today, the past weeks have been marked with memorable homecoming celebrations. After an energetic pep rally kicked off the festivities, our students and homecoming court marched through town with teachers, staff, and administrators and a lot of community members coming out. It was really an amazing event. Students were on trucks, on flatbeds. We walked, I don't know, up the biggest hill. And the smiles and the excitement, really, I've never seen a homecoming like this. Our students competed in homecoming games, and each one was very exciting and was cheered on by their community. Really, that football game, referees and even news people who were there said they've never seen anything like it with the spirit. We were packed with Tuckahoe School District residents. Additionally, last Monday, I, along with some staff and our student leaders, participated in the Eastchester Columbus Day Parade, our marching band and football teams representing our school district. And that was really fun, too, even in the rain. Looking ahead, we have board workshops planned on data analysis, project-based learning, and college preparation. We are also working with our Tuckahoe Equity Team on addressing matters of equity and with our District Health and Wellness Committee on monitoring the COVID-19 pandemic. We continue to be optimistic about all of this, and we're optimistic about what awaits Tuckahoe as we continue to lead the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Goodman. And thank you for the kind words about the Board Recognition Week, and that's a really nice display. It's very nice of you, it's not necessary, but thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, next we have comments by our business manager.
Hi. Just to piggyback on what Ms. Banky was saying before, we are coming along very nicely with the Capitol Project. The Cottle designs are pretty much done, and we're hoping will be submitted to SED next month. We had user group meetings where we invited end-users, teachers, and staff to give input on the drawings and designs. We started looking at more detail in the middle-high school drawings and a vision of what we anticipate for this room and for the cafeteria and the facade outside. So there's a lot of exciting work planned, and we're hoping that those designs will go to SED by the end of the year. It is looking good at SED right now, so we are hoping for a quick approval, but nothing's a guarantee with that. And also on this board meeting, the board will vote on the audit report. We had a fantastic audit. I'd like to thank our amazing business office team, who are instrumental in getting us ready for the audit, and we had no findings, so it's really good. And Bonadino will be presenting at the next meeting on the audit.
Great, good stuff. Thank you. All right, next comments by the PTA. Ms. Millie?
Hi, everyone. I'm Susan Millie. I'm the PTA President. I would like to join Dr. Goodman in saluting you guys in Board of Ed. I think it's called School Board Recognition Week. I wish the other two trustees were here to receive the accolades. You guys really do an amazing job, and it can't be stated enough that you guys are volunteers, serving three-year terms. And the work that you do is not only what we see on TV, but a lot of work behind the scenes, and it takes a toll. It does, I know that, and I thank you. I'm glad it's you and not me. Thank you for all your leadership, all your hard work. One of my goals as PTA President has been to try to create greater awareness in the community about the work that you do and about the role that families could play by being more engaged with board activities. I would like to, you know, try to do more, but for starters, the PTA launched a new newsletter in October 1st. I think it was our first edition. We've gotten two newsletters out so far. And in this most recent edition, we had a column about the Board of Ed and what you, the work you do, the role you play, and how people can get involved. And I hope everybody will read that, because I didn't know what I didn't know when I started here. You know, I spent the first year or two not understanding what the Board of Ed did and what my role as a parent could and should be. And I would like to raise awareness, because I think a lot of people just don't know what they don't know. So I want to help continue in that effort, because you guys definitely deserve recognition, and we, as a community, are stronger when we have more input from a broader slice of the community, broader representation. So thank you. Also this week, we're excited. In-person dance classes started today, and we have 150 happy students between grades K and 12 doing PTA dance this year. So we're very excited about that. And also this week, we have the Cottle Book Fair underway, Monday to Friday also. As in years past, students will shop with their classes. And there's information on our website and in the principal newsletters and so forth about how to prepare your child for their shopping trip. So this is both a fundraiser for the PTA and a nice opportunity to promote literacy among Cottle students. And this year, the selections, we had our new DEI Committee, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, give input to the selections to try to make sure that all students see themselves in the selections that are available to them. Since the last board meeting, we had School Picture Day at Cottle. So all the Cottle kids got to have their portraits taken. Those will appear in the yearbook, and they can purchase packages and such. Our Room Rep Committee organized, placed all the room reps with the Cottle teachers and facilitated introductions with them. Our Hospitality Committee hosted Custodian Appreciation Day, where they provided gifts, goodie bags with gift cards to thank our custodians for their amazing work, especially in this COVID context. Our Middle School Committee hosted a virtual Principal's Coffee with Dr. Linehan for middle-school families. And those are the things that have happened. And then coming up later this month, our Ways and Means Fall Fundraising Subcommittee is hosting a family photo shoot on October 23rd. We have a photographer in our community, Joe Pregiato, who donates his time for an entire day of photography. And it's a great fundraiser for us, and it's so generous of him, so I want to give a shout out. Also coming up, and this is where everybody really needs to pay attention, is we have, our Halloween event at Cottle is coming up on October 29th. It's going to build on last year's drive-through by being an outdoor walkthrough experience. And it's, we're sending out a sign-up genius so that families can register for a time slot, as though you're going to the Jack-o'-lantern blaze or something. And additional information will be included in that announcement. But I want everybody to keep tabs on their computers, because they will soon be getting this announcement, and I'm sure will want to pounce. We also will need volunteers at the Halloween event, and we actually have a couple vacancies this week for the book fair, if anybody would like to volunteer. And we welcome middle and high school students as well who are looking for community service opportunities. Those are our main things. The other thing I just want to touch on is we also took a stance on the marijuana dispensaries in Tuckahoe. I started with just a quickie email to the village, and we're now drafting a formal letter to submit later this week. Also opposed to, encouraging them to opt out. And this echoes the position of the New York State PTA, not just Tuckahoe. And now, on your agenda tonight, I hope you will agree to adopt a donation that the PTA would like to make. Our Math and Science Committee solicited grant requests from the Math and Science teachers late, last school year and honored some of them last year and tabled others. And one that we hope that you will agree to adopt is we would like to donate a telescope. This was requested by Mr. Giolarenzo, the Earth Science teacher, with the intention of hosting family night sky viewing events, which is exciting me so much. Please say yes. We're donating $800 towards this purchase, and we would love to partner with Mr. Giolarenzo on scheduling those events with the community. I think it would be fantastic. And then on the subject of donations, I want to thank all of you for, one other thing, which is, in honor of School Board Recognition Week, it's our custom to donate a gift to the district in the honor of the Board of Ed. And you guys are asked by our Community School Relations Committee to choose the recipient. And I want the public to know that you were kind enough to donate it back to the PTA specifically towards our Building Bridges Program, which will happen in the spring, and we're very grateful for that. So thank you for your faith in that program. We're very excited. I'm sorry for taking so long. I had so much to report, but I do hope that everybody will read our newsletters, because I'm trying to consolidate all of these communications in one place and thank our Communications Committee for creating those new vehicles for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you very much for all the kind words, too, for us. Appreciate it and the donations.
And for the nice PR.
Yeah. I think there's pictures in that, in that bulletin, two of us. Is that right, Susan? Is there pictures?
I'm sorry?
Is there pictures of us in that bulletin as well?
Well, it's the same picture that's going around.
Yeah, okay. Just a picture.
There's a picture on Facebook, too.
Please like our board. We're also honoring you on our social media every day this week.
Oh, that's great. Thank you very, this is way too much. Honestly, I think we all feel the same way. It's way, but we appreciate it.
We do a lot.
Thank you.
Very deserving.
All right, so that brings us to our first recognition of the audience for Agenda Items Only. Anyone want to speak about Agenda Items? No? You want to speak? All right.
Hi, W. D. Francisco, TTA President, and, come on.
Andrew Calasuno, Secretary to the TTA.
So we're really here to thank you tonight. Thank you for giving the teachers the opportunity to rise to the challenge of the pandemic and providing us with the resources necessary to keep our classrooms and children safe. It is through our partnership that we are able to overcome the many obstacles that have challenged all of us during this trying time. I recognize your constant desire to always do what's best for our students. And rest assured, we educators are always looking to continue to provide a safe environment. We, each student, has the ability to thrive.
We are all stewards in our service to provide the children with an education, and we want to thank you for volunteering your time and your passion to the Tuckahoe community, and we look forward to a productive school year. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Flowers for you.
Thank you very much. Really, really nice. Thank you. This is the most love we've got.
Thank you.
Yeah, watch the courts now.
I like your flowers.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate everything you do.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
See, thank you very much.
Beautiful.
Yeah, very nice.
Please stay for cake.
Yeah. Stay for cake. We have a big cake. Everybody should stay for cake.
People at home should come on in for cake.
Yeah.
It's like a wedding cake. That's how you do it with the food.
We have food at every meeting. We might get more people.
Well, it's not a place, it's not filling up, yeah? All right, great. This is really, really nice. Thank you. This is awesome. All right, let's jump into our consent agenda. So, motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 2 through 11. Do I have a motion? Laura, second. Cynthia, any questions or discussion about our consent agenda? No? All in favor? Okay, Business of the Board. Prove a rate resolved that the Board of Education at Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the provision of a police officer by the town of Eastchester to patrol and direct traffic on Middle Road and Siwanoy Boulevard before the school day and to be present for certain school district events, including and not limited to athletic events and elections, at a rate not to exceed $75 per hour for services rendered per assigned police officer not to exceed $35,000 for the 2021, 2022 school year. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura, any discussion? This is pretty standard for us, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? All right, next, Accept the Donation. Whereas the Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to Tuckahoe Middle School and Tuckahoe High School, and whereas the district would like to accept such donation, it is hereby resolved that the Board of Education to accept a donation from the Tuckahoe PTA Math and Science Committee in the amount of $800. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura, any comments? Thank you very much again for that. Appreciate it. All in favor? Prove a proposal. Resolved that the Board of Education approves a proposal from Jumpstart Tutoring to provide SAT or ACT prep for the 2021, 2022 school year not to exceed $35,000. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura, any discussion on that? All in favor? All right, Approve a Transfer. Resolved that the Board of Education approves a transfer not to exceed $35,000 from the State of Angela Carapello Fund into the General Fund to increase the General Fund Revenue Budget Line A 2705, Gifts and Donations, for an amount not to exceed $35,000, and increase the General Fund Budget Appropriation Line A 2110 dot four zero zero dash O2 dash one zero zero one, regular school contract, contractual high school Carapello donation SAT prep for the amount not to exceed $35,000 for the high school SAT prep courses. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura, so thank you very much to the Carapello Fund. Every year they do this for us and makes tutoring possible, so we appreciate it very much.
I just want to, just add to that, just so that, I know that, I believe Dr. Linehan's email may have mentioned it, but just so that people are aware, that Jumpstart will give a practice, or they give a, an SAT and an ACT, and then they meet with the students and they go through that and pick which one they seem to fit better for. And then the tutoring begins, and it's groups of threes.
It's groups of three, yep.
Yeah, I mean, some people are very familiar with Jumpstart, and some have never heard. So I think it just, it's helpful just to let the parents know that it is a wonderful service to take advantage of that. And surprisingly, not everybody does.
Yeah, it is surprising. Everybody should.
And I think, I think that this is, you know, even if you just, even if it was to take the SAT, the practice SAT and ACT, just to get a baseline, and they can always decide to do it a number of ways, but it's really a great tool, and they do a great job of breaking down the scores. So I encourage parents, if they're listening, to take advantage of that. So, thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. Very good. All in favor? Okay, Accept an Independent Auditor's Report. Okay, accept an independent auditor's report. Resolved that the Board of Education accepts the district's independent auditor's report for June 30th, 2021. This is the report that Ms. Parks was talking about before. Do I have a motion? Laura, second. Cynthia, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, and then that brings us to Personnel Recommendations. Accept.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, go ahead.
So, there is a resignation of one, of a teacher on this, and the teacher is still here. She just was appointed in two different tenure areas, so I know that some of you may be thinking that the teacher is resigning. We know everybody who's resigning for retirement. This is just resigning, so she's just in one area, which is special education.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. So, resolved that the Board of Education at Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves Personnel Action Items A through M as outlined below. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura, any discussion? So, I, too, would like to just congratulate those teachers that are retiring. Again, we'll, we'll recognize them more in April, but it's always bittersweet when that happens, you know? It's happy for them, but it's always sad.
I know. I was looking at a lot of them.
Experience where the good teachers go.
My son was in kindergarten.
Yeah, no, there's a lot of big names on there, so. So, congratulations to them. Bittersweet for the district, obviously, so we'll, we'll talk about that more in April. All in favor? All right, great. Pretty short agenda, that's pretty, pretty much it. So, that brings us to our second recognition of the audience for any items at all. Any takers? Okay, and that's it. Adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Cynthia, second. Laura, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Please stay for cake.